All right. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Thursday, February 1st, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. If we could all raise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Introduction to board members. To my far left is Don Gennarelli, Jerry Graybill, Paul Ametucci, myself, Michael LaRue, Phil Roy, and Rick Rains. We also have James Bellissimo, the town manager, Terry Wilson, Assistant to Coding and Planning, and Hannah Watson via Zoom for Planner from SMPDC. All right. First things first is the public hearing for land use ordinance amendments. If anyone wants to come up and speak, feel free.
Good evening. My name is Michael Wright. Live at 103 Cemetery Road. And I'm on the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee and the Open Space Committee. So I want to thank the board and the planning department for keeping a good eye on our land use ordinance and interpreting it and generally doing a pretty good job, I'd say. And I'm happy to make some comments at this public hearing. Generally, I'm pretty, I don't have a lot to say about the changes that are proposed. I would like to address the residential growth limitations. And number E, determining the number of permits to be issued. If the parcel is split or conveyed into two or three, two parcels, three years prior to the application of subdivision, the number of permits will be issued based on the parent parcel. Each subdivision will be issued only in the changes from three to four permits per year, even if the parent parcel is located in two or more zones, including overlay zones. Unless the subdivision is served by public water and public sewer. I think we all know that the growth rate in town is a concern to a lot of people. I get a lot of comments from folks saying that there are too many permits being issued. This is something that the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee is looking into and addressing. And I think that my recommendation would be that before we make any changes, we wait for the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee to make its recommendations rather than going into this at this time. In subdivision regulation amendments, 11.18, impact on natural beauty, aesthetics, historic sites, wildlife habitat, rare natural areas, and public access to the shoreline, the retention of open space and natural and historic features. I would suggest that the number four read, the subdivision shall reserve no less than 15% of undeveloped land to provide for the recreation needs of the occupants and ought to maintain the scenic and natural beauty of the area and ought to protect habitats. I'd suggest that no less than 15%, because I think that you could be presented with a case where it might make sense to preserve more than 15%. Maybe you have a proposal where there is an important wetland, critical habitat that is 20% of the property, and it would make more sense to protect the entire wetland than just 15%. Also, when you're considering wetlands, it's also important to have upland buffers to protect the wetland as well. And I'm also concerned about what the mechanism for enforcing this is. I'm on the board of Directors of Great Works Regional Land Trust, and we have worked with planning boards and towns and developers protecting conservation land for subdivisions. And we've had the experience where some of the residents think that recreation includes driving Jeeps up and down stream beds and getting them stuck there and abandoning them. So it's the, I don't know what the mechanism for enforcing these protections would be. Great Works Regional Land Trust has decided that we will no longer accept conservation easements on the protected properties. We now require that it's a fee-held property owned by the land trust. And we also encourage the developer to donate a conservation stewardship fee that's used by the land trust to hire professional staff to monitor the properties regularly and to take action if there's a violation. So I would recommend some type of mechanism for enforcing the protection of these properties and maybe even limiting recreation to critical habitats to passive recreation. On 12, number three, wildlife habitat, rare natural areas of public access to shorelines, retention of open space and natural or historic features. The sub, number one, the subdivision shall receive, and I'm going to recommend again, no less than 15% of the area this subdivision is open space in order to provide for the recreational needs of the occupants by the subdivision. I think that, again, you might be presented with a case where it makes more sense to protect more than 15% of a particular proposal. And I like the new performance standard state law for identifying farmlands. Farmland is a natural resource that you cannot recreate. Once it's gone, it's gone forever. And as we all know, no farms, no food. I think that would be beneficial to the town to take efforts to protect farmland and ensure for future farmers and food production. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Pat Bovier at Sixth Country Lane. And I was excited to see that the 11-8 and 12-3 were in here because I know that the open space group, of which I am not a real active member, but I am a member of, is, seems to be making some impact even before our new comprehensive plan comes out. There's been a lot of work since the comprehensive plan groups are meeting. And I know the plan, I don't think, goes through until 2025, but there are a lot of changes that we want to make sure do not go against the comprehensive plan that exists today. And then we'll wait and see what the people vote on in 2025. So my biggest concern is, let's see, the growth, 6.3.1. So to me, there are two things going on in this, in this change. One is just a clarification for something that has been on the books for 20 or 30 years. And that was that each subdivision shall be issued a certain number of permits per year. It was three. And I think it's great that that was clarified rather than to be each zone, because originally that was not the intent. The intent was for each subdivision to be issued three permits per year. So I'm very happy to see that you've decided to clarify that until I know this, you're planning on rewriting this whole part, right? So the part I'm most, that I'm concerned about is the changing from three to four permits. I feel that at that, at this point, having the comprehensive plan that we have now that is championing, championing the rural character of Berwick, and I think the future comprehensive plan is doing that also, that I feel like raising the number of permits for development is actually against the comprehensive plan as it exists today. I was concerned because I feel like all these groups now are working toward our new comprehensive plan to improve and whatever, improve that, and then present it to the people to vote on. We have spent a lot of money with Southern Maine Regional Planning. There's been grant money and town money that's been used for that. Like I said, as being a member on some of these committees, the emphasis is to ensure the rural character of Berwick, which seems to be what's special about Berwick. And we want to make sure that that continues. So I feel like all of this effort is being spent to support the rural character of Berwick. And then I feel like, when I watched the planning board meeting, although I wasn't there, I watched the planning board meeting where this was decided to change this to four permits. I feel like the planning board, it seems, this would speed up development by increasing the number of permits. And something that is kind of opposite of what the rest, the rest of the emphasis in town is, I feel like one arm of the town doesn't know what the other arm is doing. I feel like, you know, one is striving hard to keep Berwick like the people have wanted and the comprehensive plan have wanted to be the rural character of Berwick. We know we need development, but we don't need development in the rural parts of Berwick. So my idea is to either break this into two parts and keep the clarification in there that the, that it's for subdivision and not per zone, so the way it has been treated all this time, but do not make any changes about the number of permits. Because really, increasing the number of permits is not supported by the comprehensive plan at this point. If that's the way the comprehensive plan wants to go in 2025, then that's fine. But right now, I don't feel like that is in keeping with what's going on. I believe that we should wait for any actual change, not clarification necessarily, but like I said, there are two parts to this, but for any change to this, I believe that we need to wait for the rewrite. You're going to be putting this in front of the townspeople whenever this is. And then, within a year or something, however long it takes to do the rewrite, you're going to be presenting it again, and then in a different form, maybe changing that again and that kind of thing. I feel like that's not appropriate. I feel like the townspeople are going to feel like, oh, we already voted on this. You know, they're not going to understand the big picture. So I think the waiting for the rewrite, and also the rewrite that might be supporting the new comprehensive plan, is a smarter move than to be making a change at this point when, you know, when all that's needed for this is a clarification. So I feel that when, I know the second part of this is you guys going into some kind of a meeting where you decide whether you're going to accept or reject these. I'm hoping that when you go to that active part of your meeting, that someone on the planning board will propose to table this, this 6.3.1. And either all, either one, the one part where it's three or four, three to four permits, or the whole thing if we need to. And I know, I think if someone votes to table, you all have to vote on that. And, you know, that's okay. That's the way things work. But in that way, if you table this, then you will be waiting for the rewrite, which I think will express more what the town wants for the future growth, for our residential growth limitation. I think, I feel like it's something that requires a lot of thought. And I, I think maybe this going from three to four was done, you know, for one purpose, but I think another, I think it can end up creating more permits than originally planned for our future, and we don't know when the rewrite is going to be. So based on the 1982 state law that says that all land use ordinances must conform to an approved comprehensive plan to be enforceable, I feel like this three to four permits is asking for a change that is not consistent with our comprehensive plan by, because it allows increased development, because it allows for increasing the amount of development. So when the town votes on the new comprehensive plan, then we will need to see if the change and a change like this in the ordinance would agree with the new comprehensive plan. So as of right now, I feel like it is not something that the comprehensive plan supports, and therefore, I don't think it should be changed until the rewrite, when it can be thought out entirely. Sorry if I did a lot of repeating.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Jackson, 8A, Goodwin Street, Berwick. And thank you for holding this meeting and trying to make our land use ordinance more of a living document than just something on the shelf. I also want to speak to item 6.3.1E. And along with Michael and Pat, I agree that, you know, changing the number of permits from three to four is maybe not a timely thing to do, given that we're working on both an open space plan and a comprehensive plan. And that waiting for those to mature further before reaching in, making this particular decision, I think it's just fine about the clarifying about whether it's in two or more zones. That seems perfectly reasonable to go ahead with, but to make the change from three to four, I think, should wait. And then I also like to speak, let's see, yeah, on subdivision regulation amendments, 11.8 and 12.3. Michael's correct in pointing out that it'd be wise to make this a minimum of 15% for each of those items, not give the impression that 15% is an exact amount. And then I also want to offer a clarification on the definition of steep slopes. Now, the proposed definition is for 15%, which is 15-foot rise over 100 feet. But to me, the missing factor here is over what horizontal scale are we applying this? You know, one would think that dealing with land use planning, you know, something larger, like maybe 40 feet horizontally, roughly the size of a house, that might be a scale. What the exact scale is, I don't have a strong opinion on, but it should be something. You know, like on the extreme example, if you take the definition of 15% as 15-foot rise over 100-foot distance, if you, you can do the same thing and say, 15% is also a horizontal distance of one foot and a .15-foot rise. I mean, that's, that's actually like about an inch and a quarter. So that's my, my point is that if you just apply 15%, well, how do we measure that on the ground? What's important? So by having a reasonable scale over which you look at it, you get rid of the things that are irrelevant to the process, and you just look at what's important for making the decisions. So looking online, I see that those, some jurisdictions like, take like a two-foot contour map and count five contour lines and measure that distance. So five contour lines on a two-foot map, that's an eight-foot vertical rise. And the number works out to be 53.3 feet. That would give you a 15% slope. Or you could have four contour lines, which would give you a six-foot rise, and that would work out to 40 feet. So something along that line, I think, should be in the definition to make it more workable and that a surveyor would know what to do with it. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Terry, did we have anyone email or mail us about their public comment?
I have no public comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Well, I'll make a motion that we close this public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay. Further discussion?
All in favor?
Okay. Public hearing is closed. Next is the first public comment. Okay. Closing the first public comment. No approval of minutes, no old business, no new business. Second public comment. Okay. Close that. Land use ordinance amendments. So I guess we'll start with 11.84, no less than 15%. Should we add the no less for that and the 12.3?
No less or a minimum of, I think either, either or works. Just decide which one we like better. I think a minimum.
Minimum.
If you say a minimum of, it kind of plants that seed that you would like to see more for. I think it's a little more forward-leaning than saying no less than. Yeah, like minimum of. Point well taken. Does it require a motion, or we can just draft it?
Yeah, we can, we're, we're just go through the whole thing.
Okay. Great.
All right. Is that, and then comes down to the three or four permits. So the idea of the changing of the three to four permits was to basically, with a minor subdivision, it's four lots. So we're trying to update that so if, with the infrastructure that's needed, instead of having three lots being developed and then the infrastructure could, could be basically on hold for the fourth lot, this kind of ties it all together so they can be all one and done, instead of having to wait the next year to build that infrastructure and that fourth lot.
I do recall that discussion, and based on some testimony provided this evening, I think we need to be really sensitive about not disenfranchising. Some of our folks are working very hard on the comprehensive plan. And I do agree that they should be working in parallel and not conversely. I just want to offer that food for thought and maybe spark additional discussion. I mean, I did not have all the information when we, we did have that discussion, but being provided with, with this new information, I do feel like we should be operating in parallel. Because we have a hard enough time getting people to volunteer on these boards within our community, and if we're alienating them and not taking that input, I think it does a disservice to the process as a whole. Agreed.
Can I offer a clarification, if I'm correct? I absolutely appreciate everybody's opinions and agree with them. If we were, in fact, increasing the number of permits for those subdivisions, and really were not, they're still going to get all four of their permits, whether they get them three in one year and one the next year. If it's a four-lot subdivision, they're going to get their four permits. Our goal, I think, here was that instead of stretching it out over a two-year period where three houses are built one year, and the fourth one, which they would get the next year, continues the construction for a longer period of time, I think our goal was that let's try to get all four of those, you know, small subdivision done in a year so that any neighbors don't have to put, put up with trucks and noise and construction over a two-year period as opposed to a one-year period. So if you have a four-lot subdivision, you're going to get your four permits. And you're just going to get them all in one year instead of three in one year and one in the next. That, in my opinion, is what our thought process was.
Yeah. And, you know, just following up on this, Rick, I also believe that, you know, when we, these are all approved. These are houses that people are going to move into, and these are probably pre-purchased already. And you're just waiting for that, that house to be built so they can move in. And you're delaying people from moving in, but they're going to move in. And that is part of, of the growth that has been approved for that, that four-unit subdivision. So, so I think this just makes it easier for builders to not stretch it out. And, and it doesn't harm in any way the fact that those houses are going to be built. It's just when they're going to be built. And I think going from three to four is not a heavy lift.
I also think it's important to clarify that if it was a five-lot subdivision, that becomes a major subdivision, and that has a different set of clarifications and whatnot. So it's, our goal was to look at this as a four-lot, small subdivision, and how can we consolidate that into a year as opposed to two?
Do we, do we need to, because I watched the last meeting, do we
Do we, do we need to, because I watched the last meeting, do we need to delineate between a four-lot subdivision and this, you know, separate it out?
Put the wording in here.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm for that. Definitely for that.
I think that's the way to go.
Major subdivisions, just for the.
And that keeps us, I think, I think that keeps us in line with the comprehensive plan. Alls we're changing is a subdivision, a small subdivision, because they're going to get their permits anyway, like you said.
Okay, so you're basically saying add the wording, so it would be four permits on a minor subdivision and then keep three for the major.
Three to four, yes.
Does that, does that sound?
It makes sense if we can, we can see how it, check with our legal and see if it sticks.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we have proposed verbiage for that?
So maybe each minor subdivision shall be issued four, only four.
We're up 2-4?
Up 2-4.
Yeah. And then major subdivision would.
Would stay with three per year?
Yeah.
Yep.
And that way that would.
Which is where it is now.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Maybe the other part is clarifying.
I think sometimes there might be some confusion on, oh, they're allowing more permits than they should. It's really, the permits are going to be issued no matter what. It's a matter of when they get issued.
Exactly.
Well, to play devil's advocate on that notion, I would say in alignment with the comprehensive plan, just hearing what our townspeople are saying to us, yes, is it, is it more administratively arduous on the builder? Certainly. Would it possibly have a developer, you know, they're going to gear up to build these three houses? And if they have to go back in a year to gear up again, that is a natural check valve for slowing growth, which is, I think, what, what we're being told, that the people want and that the comp plan wants. So I just, I want us to be sensitive to that fact.
Oh, no, I agree.
We are making it easier for a developer to come in and, okay, I'm going to bang out four houses. Right now, the way it's written, yes, could they go back and get a permit? Sure, they can. It's going to cost them more money and it's going to be a little bit more difficult for them to do it. And it might be a natural check valve to support that, you know, limiting growth that we're looking for, that the people of the town are telling us they want. So just food for thought on that.
Yeah.
I think that's very possible, and I'm not arguing against it, but I also think that if I was a developer and was going to make a four-lot subdivision, I'm committed to all four lots on my line items so that I'm going to make money at the end of four lots. I don't think that I would give up a whole lot just because it's a year later. Personally, I would, I would still commit to building that extra lot. And now it means, again, another year of noise and construction in the neighborhood. But I'm open to.
It also could include potential increase of costs. I mean.
Sure.
Especially after COVID, the cost of building has increased drastically.
Which is a check valve for growth.
Right.
So I just, I want us to be.
How about this, James? Throw your opinion out here. Do you feel that the change from three to four permits does not meet the comprehensive plan?
I think, like what Phil's saying, it has a potential to incentivize different types of growth that we haven't seen. Obviously, three to four, I was talking to Terry a little bit about this, it could have a pretty marginal impact or it could really, Phil, you hit the nail on the head about, just in terms of, when you talk about scale and the ability to develop, you know.
Think about how many developers we have, right, working in the town, building homes. If we're limiting or causing them to have to put one in the hopper and wait a year, that is limiting growth, which is kind of the point of the comp plan, if I'm not mistaken. I could be.
I'm riding the fence here, right? So, short answer is, I don't think it's against the comprehensive plan, but I would lean to agreeing that it's a big enough change that it probably makes sense to hold off until there's like a more comprehensive, because a lot of this stuff, open space planning and R3 planning, there will be a slew of comprehensive changes that will be coming down the pike in the next couple of years.
Well, based on that input from our own town manager, I would make a motion that we table it until we get the draft of the comprehensive plan and we do that in parallel. That way it's, we're not pitting one against the other.
I would ask to maybe modify that motion and include the new definition of not having extra permits per zone, but rather per subdivision, which I think clarifying that is important. And that was the first main purpose of redoing that particular line. But I think that I'm also in favor of what you say about, let's not make changes to the number until we're all on the same page.
So what does that motion sound like?
That motion sounds like I would make a motion to table the change of numbers of permits, however, keep the new definition of a subdivision getting a set number based only on how many subdivisions there are, not how many zones it may be in. So.
I will rescind my previous motion and defer to yours, and I will second.
Hold on, hold on. We wouldn't be tabling, we would just be striking it out. There's no need to table anything.
No, no.
If we table it, then, perfect.
Strike it out.
Leave it as is.
So leave it as is until we, well, no, we need, we do need the clarification of, what was the thing we, we wordsmithed that to clarify something and I forget, I just.
It's the amount of zones. Basically, the, what you guys are talking about striking out is each subdivision shall be issued only three, so that would stay permits per year. The thing that's added is even if the parent parcel is located in two or more zones, including overlay zones, unless the subdivision is served by public water and public sewer.
You're just taking that whole thing out.
No, you're just.
No, we're just striking out, yeah.
Keeping it. Okay, okay.
Which is a change in itself.
And I guess I'm the contrarian here. I think going from three to four is not a significant difference, and particularly in this environment where housing is way short in the entire entirety of the country and York County in particular. It, these houses will be sold, all four of them will be sold with people waiting to get into them. So making them wait an extra year or however that math works out for them, I don't think does any good. It does not put a limit on, on growth at all. If we approve it here as a four unit, those four units will be built, whether this year or next year. So people will move in and there will be growth, at least four new units. So I'm not sure that we're, we're really doing anything here.
So one, one way that it may have an impact, though, is if I'm a developer and I'm looking at putting in a four-unit subdivision, but I'm only going to get three permits and I got to wait another year for the fourth one, I may just bring it down to a three-unit subdivision and that fourth house is eliminated, which slows growth.
Which slows growth. That's where I'm, that's my thought process as well.
Question, you know, and I'm just playing devil's advocate here, because when I developed my subdivision down in Georgia, we, all the infrastructure was put in for all lots. They only gave us X amount of permits per year, but that was all done in one year. So the only thing you had to worry about was just that, the next bunch of houses being built. It really didn't affect anything in development of the subdivision. We did all that.
Yeah, I agree, roads were put in all the way to the end.
Yeah, do it. Not going to, I mean, building a house is not going to, yeah, it's going to be, you know, I put up with it, my subdivisions I lived in down there, it's going to happen because it is growth. And it's going to happen a little slower than you might want it to, but you've just got to deal with it.
It does slow the growth, though.
It does.
I think we're all in agreement that it slows the growth, which is in alignment with what the townspeople are asking us to do and what the comp plan is trying to do.
So I don't think it's going to change anything.
So I would advocate for keeping it the way it is. If we're in agreement that it doesn't change anything, then let's keep it the way it is and develop it in parallel with the comp plan. If we're in agreement.
Yeah. Do we need a motion to do anything about that?
I think so.
So I'll make a motion that we have changed the number from four to three, but keeping the definition of per subdivision as opposed to per zone.
I will second that motion.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, all against?
Okay.
So we will strike that out. And the next is the steep slope definition. What horizontal scale is being used? When I read it, it, the horizontal scale, it's right on definitions.
Right. There we go.
Yep. James, do you have any input to add on that?
It's way over my head. But I don't, to be honest with you, I don't, maybe Jerry, the engineer in the room.
I know what you're saying. And then if you have to define it to a surveyor or something to come back, you need something more than this, I think. Is what he's saying. I don't know what that more is, but.
Let's ask Hannah.
Right.
What's your input on this?
I would agree. I, there'd be more, but I don't know what the more is. I would probably just defer to reading what other ordinances define it as and look for other language.
Okay.
Or if there's kind of a standard engineering.
We're on a time crunch for this because it, we have to vote on this tonight.
Okay. I can look at other ordinances while I sit here.
You have until the 15th to finalize.
Okay, so we don't have to vote on it today?
You can vote on it the 15th.
Okay.
Does, do we have a town engineer that could chime in?
We can probably find whether it's like a planning dictionary or.
We got several engineers in our office. I can ask them tomorrow how they see this and what their definition is and send that around to everybody.
I like that. That's a great idea.
Send it to Irish and Terry and then they can disperse it.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me see what I can find tomorrow.
Okay. All right, well, I guess we're not voting on it tonight then. Yeah, Terry?
Back on this, they asked about enforcing this.
Oh, yeah, so the.
Do we want to add something?
What? So question about enforcement of the protection of recreational land.
I know one of the mechanisms is there's homeowners associations that are responsible. In some cases, it's, you know, if we need to protect open space, it's code enforcement. But I think it opens up a whole nother discussion that we're probably not ready to have, that's much more involved in terms of the use of the open space.
So we should work on that for the next vote?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
The only thing I can offer you guys on that from being out of state and developing was we had open space in our developments down in Georgia also, and the homeowners association was the one that told you what you could and could not do on that land, on that open space. Usually that's where they come into play.
Okay. I think you'll see some recommendations from open space, the open space committee as well, of some of those mechanisms on recommended uses, restrictions, enforcement, maintenance. Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I imagine that it could get convoluted because number 12.3 also talks about public access to a shoreline. If that's in open space, like what's private, what's public, who gets to decide what? And if the open space committee takes all that into consideration and has input for us, then I think we wait for that.
I do like the 15% number as a start, if not higher.
Yeah.
Like 25.
Yeah, as a minimum.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I like that, too.
A minimum of.
I mean, if you're taking a two-and-a-half acre lot, house size, and you're putting it into like a cluster subdivision, that's less than an acre per house, you've just freed up an acre and a half times however many houses plus the extra space. Generally speaking, there's quite a bit of extra space.
So we did recommend putting that verbiage in 11.84 to say a minimum of 15%. Do we want to do that here as well?
Yes, yeah, yeah. When I, when we discussed that, I was talking about both.
Both, okay, excellent. I like it. All right.
It's a starting point. Yeah, and to go off on what Rick was just saying, I, me and James have had some discussions about the 15%. And at a certain scale, it feels like it's a lot. Because if you're subdividing 100 acres, now you're talking 15 acres. I mean, that is a lot of land. If you're talking four acres, five acres, like you said, it's not that much. So I, I think what James and I discussed, we kind of felt that 15 was like the middle grounds for it, where I feel like maybe leaning more towards the future that we tried to discuss more of the scalability aspect of it. Yeah. That's just how I felt on that.
Right now, it's good the way we have it.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, the way we're proposing.
Yeah. All right, and then James added a couple things. One was the affordable housing developments that meet the requirements for 30A MSRA 4364 are allowed to have a dwelling unit density of at least two and a half times the base density that is otherwise allowed in that location. So that's just from the state, right?
That's part of LV 2003. Same with 7.8. It pretty much says the most we can require for off-street parking for affordable housing developments is two spaces, two parking spaces per three dwelling units.
Okay.
So it's like .66667 parking spaces per dwelling unit.
Two-thirds of a parking spot.
It's a much more concise way of saying it.
Drive a smart car. Two and a motorcycle.
And then, so it was those two things and then that was, oh, and the added affordable housing in the definitions is just see definition on 30A MSRA 4364.
Just references the law in case they decide to change the definition.
Okay. Yeah. I guess moving on, informational items.
So we're banning utility poles.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Back, back to the land use ordinance. Utility poles, it was changed to commercial signs are not allowed on utility poles. That would be enforceable by code enforcement. I like that. I mean, CMP owns those poles anyway, so we shouldn't be, they don't want anything on those poles anyways. And non-commercial items like yard sales and stuff like that, I feel that, you know, usually the people take them off, but sometimes they stay a little bit longer, but they still fall off pretty easily.
So are we okay on Sweets' Street with the steep sign on the utility pole?
Yeah, I think it's mostly about commercial business.
Business sign.
Yeah, like lawn care signs or the solar signs or just examples.
Well, we need that sign, trust me.
Or you could just put a post in.
Put a post on the sign.
Well, we can do that if we need to.
Yeah, town could do that.
Yeah.
Right? Make it comply.
Yeah, part of the reason they didn't is because I brought up a point with the gentleman that lives in the house right there, has a fence up right now on his lot line, and you would not be able to cut the grass back there on the other side of it if you put a sign pole up. But we could always put one up right in front of the pole if we needed to be, and we'd be fine. But I think for now, as long as nobody says anything, I think we're fine.
Okay. And then, James, do you know if the town attorney, has he looked at this?
Not yet.
Okay.
No.
I was just going to ask about the illuminated vehicle mounted signs. I mean, I just want to make sure it's okay. I don't know if he's going to.
Yeah, it's just, we're talking with Irish, we'll see, see if we can do it.
Okay.
If it becomes, if it's a parked illuminated sign, does it fall under land use? It might.
Right.
We'll confirm that.
I think, I mean, maybe add the verbiage when it's parked at.
For more than 10 minutes.
Or when it's parked at the, the actual store or the business that it's located at.
I think even then, though, people, like the Domino's guy will pull in, run inside, get the next door to come back out and leave again. He's there three minutes. Does he have to turn the sign off and turn it back on? Maybe.
Yeah, I mean, you're right. Yeah, I mean, you're right, sometimes it's three minutes.
Sometimes it's an hour.
Sometimes it's an hour. And at that point, like, there's no other businesses on, on the downtown area that have any lit-up signs.
Yeah.
I mean, at that point, if they're allowed to, then, let's say Bad Wolf Butcher, they put it on their cars, if they want illuminated signs on their cars, and then Primal Fitness wants it on theirs.
But if you go to Portland or Boston, right, they can't have billboards, so what do they do? They got those big trucks that drive around with the mobile billboards.
Right.
So I, I think, in my opinion, that is probably a loophole somewhere that we would not be able to legally enforce. I could be mistaken, but
Well, we, we'll see. We'll see what Phil says, and we'll go from there.
Right.
And next meeting, we'll talk more about it.
Sounds good.
It has to be enforceable as well, so when you talk about minutes, you know, 10 minutes versus 30 minutes.
Right, who's going to keep track?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, think about it this way, it's just like our sound ordinance, that's a 15-minute consecutive sound that has to happen. You know, who's going to stand there with a stopwatch being like, it's been 16 and a half minutes? I mean, there probably is people that would do that, but it has to be consecutive sound, though, so it's like, you're going to be resetting that clock a lot, like especially if it's a dog that's barking, or gunshots that are happening, because, you know.
Dog barking.
All right.
What you got to do is put a camera on it and record it.
I guess that's it for the land use ordinance amendments for now. We will vote on them next meeting. Next is informational items.
Did you check out Moulton Street? A lot of trees were taken down today. It's part of a major infrastructure project. Moulton Street's being completely reconstructed, along with parts of First, Second, and Copeland Street. All new stormwater infrastructure section for the planning board a few months ago. That also establishes a riverfront park called Great Falls Park. So it's exciting.
Are they dropping timber there now? Is that where they're
Yep.
Oh, wow.
Yep, trees are being dropped. There's a ton of landscaping that's involved with the park once it's established, so it's a project six years in the making.
I have questions about that.
Yes, I can talk to you.
I didn't know.
I can talk to you. Just sharing the good news, that's all. That's all I have.
Anyone else? No? Okay.
If there are no further items for discussion from the esteemed Burgess Meeting Room in the depths of the Warwick Town Hall, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that motion.
Okay, all in favor? All right, good night.